Welcome everyone to the March 11th Board of Ed Workshop. Does everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as it is for all.
Welcome everyone. So for tonight, we actually have a kind of a special Tusker Pride moment. We've invited the, or at least some of the cast of Matilda Jr. for the SMS musical that will be going on March 20th, 21st, and 22nd. So take it away, cast of Matilda Jr.
Hello, my name is Ayla Schoenberg and I am an eighth grade student at SMS. I've been with the SMS Drama Club all three of my middle school years. To me, Drama Club is where I can be myself, where I can let all of my outside troubles go and just have fun with kind and amazing people. I have also made many new friends in Drama Club. The drama teachers, Ms. Williams, Ms. Rasiopoe, and Ms. Malara, have all been so supportive and have made this journey in Drama Club so much greater. Lastly, I want to thank all of my supporters through this amazing ride. My family, friends, teachers, cast, and every amazing person behind the scenes as well. Drama Club is much more than a club. It's a community, a second home, but really it's a joy and one of my favorite places to be.
Hello, everybody. We are the Officers of Drama Club and my name is Claire Feldman. I have been in drama for all three years of middle school and this year I had the honor of being the president of Drama Club. Something that I love about drama is how it just gets better each year. Drama Club lets you make so many new friends, whether they're older or younger than you. You make so many inside jokes with friends and getting to be onstage and a part of an amazing show brings me so much joy and fun. I will miss Drama Club next year and will never forget the hard work the cast and crew have put into the shows.
Hello, my name is Jay Saha. I have been in stage crew and Drama Club throughout my time here in SMS. It was a wonderful experience being able to work with such creative minds. From all the places that I've been a part of, I was amazed by how everyone collaborated to make these productions, how beautifully the cast and crew executed the performances. Drama Club allows people to express themselves in songs, dances, and connecting with people around them. Drama Club can be the gateway to developing creativity, critical thinking, and leadership that is useful for many other areas in life. I have great gratitude for being able to be a part of these shows and to everyone who put work into this play.
Hi, my name is Felicity McCormick and I'm in seventh grade. I've been doing Drama Club for two years now and I'm the secretary. Something I love about drama is how much fun it is to be in. Every time I come, I'm having the time of my life. From dancing onstage to singing fun songs, it's a joy to be in. When I originally joined, I never expected how much work it would be to take to put together a show, but Drama Club has taught me so much. From rehearsals to the practices at home, it is evident that from the final product, how much work is put into the show each year. I'm super excited to rejoin Drama Club next year and look forward to Matilda coming up soon.
So we're gonna perform one song. We wanted to do something upbeat and fun for you. And as they're getting into their places, I want to say that the directors had zero to do with what they just said. They took it upon themselves to create a shared Word document and put their thoughts together and culminate them. Like I'm Florrie because I just learned that a few minutes ago. So bravo to you all. Ready? Thank you so much for having us, Patsy and Matilda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. And tickets are on sale now, correct? $10?
No, yes. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, this brings us to our first public comment section for agenda items. Agenda items only. Do we have any speakers for public comment tonight? First round? Go ahead. Okay, so it's a maximum of a 30-minute period. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. No district employee or student may be committed, commented upon, or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later time or date. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response. And all written statements shall be given to the district clerk.
Okay. Hi, my name is Frank Rodeo. I have a son who's in eighth grade, trying out for the Somers baseball team. I've been coaching him since he was four years old, been involved with the CISO program, ASO program for many years. And it was just brought to our attention as we're learning about the high school program, about the North Salem merging with the Somers baseball team. With that news, there were some concerns, but just here really just to say thank you to the board for taking a moment to take a step back so we can look at the pluses and minuses and how this will affect our children going forward. And that's all I want to say, just want to thank you for the quick action so we can take a look and just see how it will affect our children. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Max Godeo. I'm 14, I'm in eighth grade. I've been playing baseball since I was four. Thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, well, this is going to bring us then to our central office report. We have our element of excellence on global citizenship.
Thank you. This is the fourth installment of our Forward in Excellence Report. We started out at the beginning of the year in September with our professional learning communities component. Then we had the social, emotional, and physical wellness component discussed at the October board meeting. In November, we had the presentation on the 21st century knowledge and skills. There'll be an update on that as part of the presentation tonight. But tonight, we're looking at the global citizenship component. And to speak to that portion of the Forward in Excellence Report, we have Liz Turner, our Director of Learning Elementary, and Tara Kearns, our Director of Learning Secondary.
Thank you, Harry. Let me just make sure. Okay. So as Harry mentioned, tonight, we're going to be highlighting the global citizenship element of excellence. And we're going to have the opportunity to highlight some of the ways in which our students are learning to see themselves as part of a larger interconnected world, beginning with their classrooms and their schools, and then extending beyond those walls. Earlier this year, the Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures laid out the New York Inspires roadmap that emphasized student-centered learning and global citizenship and career readiness. And the portrait of a graduate that the state has adopted aligns directly with the work that we're doing in Somers. And you'll see tonight, some of the ways in which our students embody the characteristics of that portrait as effective communicators, innovative problem solvers, and global citizens. So on these first couple pages here, we'll take a look at page 37. We see some of those highlights, some photos showing our students in action. And global citizenship really starts right here at home. And civic engagement begins for our youngest learners when they become citizens of their classrooms. Across our schools, students actively contribute to their classroom, school, and local communities, from the SIS food drive for St. Luke's Food Pantry to the annual Veterans Brunch at SHS. We see our kids demonstrating compassion and gratitude. And in addition to these acts of kindness, students seize opportunities to build connections and leadership skills. There's a picture here of the football champions greeting the Primrose students and really showing them what it means to belong to the Somers family.
And along with our aspirations for students to connect and make an impact, both in our local community here in Somers and beyond, we also aspire for our students to continuously celebrate their own families, culture, and traditions, as well as learn about and respect the diversity within Somers and beyond. So we strive for this in a number of ways, including curriculum-based projects that happen, school assemblies, we have wonderful guest speakers, field trips, and the use of technology and virtual reality for some of the experiences. We also have a wonderful partnership with our regional BOSIs in the arts and education, which allows us to have many of these experiences that come in, in these visits, at a lower cost, which is a win-win for everyone. And we stress the importance of fostering connections and belonging through our different mentoring programs that we have here in the district and classroom celebrations and events. We're also very proud of our ongoing work of fostering inclusivity in our schools. And we create those No Place for Hate activities that take place each year. And we also infuse elements of our district's committee work on learning inclusively for everyone, which we know is life. So there's an ongoing emphasis on that theme of being proud and appreciating your own culture and experiences and being open to learning from others.
So our commitment to these goals, helping students develop empathy, leadership, and that sense of responsibility, is also reflected in our International Backglory at Framework. After a successful authorization visit this fall, the high school has officially been accredited as a middle years program school. This creates exciting opportunities for the alignment of learning experiences that continue to build as students transition from middle school into high school and then into one of the various academic pathways that we offer for 11th and 12th graders. One of the elements, one of the big moments that we wanted to highlight today was at the end of eighth grade last year, we had our first group complete the NYPD Community Project. And for this work, students identify a need within their community and they take meaningful action to address it. And we can all see some of last year's cohort's amazing work when we drive down the street in town. The Thelma Barlow crosswalk down the road resulted from the efforts of a community project that allowed students to work with the Somers Town Council to get that sidewalk and that pedestrian crossing installed there. And on the drive over there, you can also see the little free library. That was also another community project. This year, we do have a few groups who've already completed their action, the action component of their project. One just hosted an event at the Somers Public Library called Wings of Protection: Bluebird Friends. They had a fully booked event. Six families were able to learn about bluebirds nesting in the area and they painted and took home some birdhouses for their own families. If we're interested in seeing some more of these students' work, their community project showcase night is being held on May 15th from 6:00 to 7:00 here at Somers Middle School. So while the community project provides opportunities for collaborative innovation and civic engagement here at the middle school, the personal project, which all 10th graders will complete beginning next school year, focuses on taking research and communication skills to the next level. The new Tusker 102 class for sophomores provides an avenue for students to explore areas of interest and ability, in many ways building off of that eighth grade experience, and honing the skills that they need for that project.
Will the Tusker 102 projects be presented this year that are being like as a pilot, similar to what you did with the middle years program?
Yes, so there is the pilot group at the high school currently who are going through that process, using that Tusker 102 course to really hone those projects. So we're in the process of figuring out exactly how those are going to be presented as well. But we can look forward to, once it rolls out next year, that we'll do a bigger showcase event.
And this school year, we continue to expand world language experiences in our schools. We began a pilot of world language experience in Primrose, where all classes in grades K through 2 are getting exposure to Spanish. The students are practicing greetings and some basic vocabulary like days of the week, seasons, family member names, and are learning through songs and videos and play and other activities. And it's nice because the children are bringing home their activity sheets so that families can see the words that they're learning and engaging with. And then in grades 3 through 5, our world language has become a designated special in their six-day rotation. And these lessons are building upon the students' prior exposure. And in grade 5, the children also get a bit of exposure to French and Italian in that last trimester. And this helps them think about a language that they may be interested in pursuing once they go to the middle school. And it's great. All of our language offerings have at least two to three sections filled with students as the kids get into middle school and beyond. And like other subjects, there's different pathways in which world language can be followed based on the student's interest or their needs. And some may choose to pursue the SEAL of Biliteracy, which we celebrated last spring with some of our students. And this is a SEAL that is put on their diploma. Students who achieve this SEAL excel at both the English language as well as another world language. Last year, we had 15 graduates earn this SEAL and this year, we have 17 students pursuing this SEAL. So that's great. As Tara mentioned earlier, there's offerings that are like this are really in line with our direction we're going for the state's Portrait of the Graduate. Being a global citizen, being a good communicator. This type of language course and these offerings and the type of work that students can engage with really assists them in fulfilling some of these elements as they're putting together their own portrait of being a New York State graduate. So it's great that we have these different offerings in world language.
And we know that being a good communicator in today's interconnected world also means being a digital citizen. And that digital literacy is an essential component for students to thrive as global citizens. New York State has also implemented computer science and digital fluency standards to ensure that all students in grades K through 12 develop the skills needed to navigate technology safely and effectively. These standards build progressively from foundational digital skills in elementary school, things like responsible internet use, keyboarding, and some basic research skills, to more advanced concepts in middle and high school, including data analysis, programming, and the ethical considerations of artificial intelligence and cybersecurity. Teachers across all curriculum areas and grade levels have examined these standards. They've identified points of connection with their curricula and have also made plans to address any gaps that we might have. Over the past two years, our elementary and secondary schools have also hosted assemblies on internet safety for students. And we've also had the opportunity for kids to give back within their own school communities too. Here in the district, we've had freshman students from Tusker 101 go over to SIS and give students lessons in digital citizenship as well.
And we know that being a global citizen means bringing our own unique strengths and experiences to the table while also developing those skills to communicate and connect and build meaningful, productive relationships with people from other diverse backgrounds. And that's why we're proud of our ongoing efforts to foster inclusive schooling. Because inclusivity is not just an aspect of global citizenship in this report, but it's something that we truly celebrate in Somers. Each year, we celebrate Inclusive Schools Week. But beyond that, inclusivity is embedded in our schools through our Learning Inclusively for Everyone initiative that we know is life. In our schools, every child, regardless of their level of support that they need, belongs in the general experience. And we've expanded our co-teaching partnerships, particularly at the secondary level. And our teachers are continuously working to create more inclusive environments to support all students. It's an ongoing journey for us, really. There's always room to grow in this area, always new and innovative ways to think about our approaches, whether it's through planning, through our teaching practices, or using technology in new, effective ways for students. Inclusive schooling will continue to be a part of our success planning as a district because we're dedicated to ensuring that every child is seen and valued and really empowered in their own learning.
Okay, and finally, over the past few years, SHS has continued to expand opportunities for hands-on learning experiences outside of the school building for our seniors and to Liz's point, for all of our seniors, regardless of what their high school pathway might look like. This gets them career-ready and ready to achieve success as they leave us. The senior experience can take the form of an independently designed project or an internship with a business or hospital or other organization. There's a student featured in the picture here who graduated a few years ago, actually, but we included him because he currently is employed with the Bronx Zoo and he began that passion and that avenue through his senior internship. The high school SMART goal this year is to increase the number of students who will publicly present their project or their internship experience. And these presentations are going to take place in June, so you can stay tuned for an invitation to come and see some of that good work as well. So we'll be busy between the community projects and the senior experiences. So I'm going to turn things back over to Liz now, who's going to transition into our other building SMART goals and update on those in our mid-year report.
I just ask, who drew that mural? Who created that mural?
I don't have the student's name, but we can definitely find out, yes.
Excellent job.
And so that's an option for a senior, you're saying? Not a mandatory thing, but you're looking to get more seniors involved in it, is what you're saying?
So all seniors participate in the experience in some way. In the past, we've not required all seniors to publicly present that. Oftentimes, there will be a smaller presentation to their classroom. But we're looking to expand the opportunities for board members, community members, other grade levels of students to come and see their work.
Can you just, I don't know, I think I might have missed it. What digital citizenship is?
Yeah, so New York State's standards really focus on technical elements of computer science and data, keyboarding for the little ones, programming as they grow. In one category, those technical navigational skills of the digital landscape. And then the citizenship piece comes in and learning how to communicate digitally, ensuring that the actions that you're taking on the internet are safe. Learning about cybersecurity and other potential, you know, more threatening aspects of the digital world. So ensuring that students through their various curricular areas are learning to understand, again, not just those technical components, but artificial intelligence and how to navigate the world that they're going into in college and career.
And it's amazing, we had an elementary series of assemblies on this topic and it's just, it's always eye-opening, the amount of the digital world that our younger and younger students are understanding, interacting with, and are exposed to. So we were really happy this year that we could even have those assemblies for students just to open up those conversations even more with our youngest. I'm sure my own child was guilty of raising her hand when the group was asked, who knows what TikTok is? And the hands go up. So the more and more that we can do in this area is important.
Go over like the dangers and safety and all that?
Yeah, how to conduct yourself safely in that environment. Thank you, Chris, for jumping over to the next slides. So we wanted to also tonight provide that update on our K through 8 SMART goals. These goals focus on our STAR assessment performance in reading and math. And that is for our exiting grades of second, fifth, and eighth. And a reminder that the STAR performance is norm-referenced. So this is a comparison of our students' performance on these assessments to all those students who have taken it across the nation. As we shared in the fall, these assessments were renormed this fall to more closely reflect the national performance post-COVID from 2021. Prior to that, the assessments hadn't been renormed since 2017. So like many across the nation, for the beginning of the year, we did see some beginning fluctuation in student performance. So we'll start with ELA. Our STAR reading performance is moving in the right direction here. We see great gains in Primrose with 86% of second graders meeting or exceeding grade level expectation for this mid-year report. Also progressing in SIS with 81% of students meeting or exceeding. We've stayed steady in eighth grade with 79% of students meeting or exceeding expectation. And it's not uncommon to see quicker gains in those younger grades. For many, the reading skills are rapidly developing in decoding and processing of text. If you think about a young child's exposure to the world and how rapidly they're able to add to their background knowledge and their vocabulary. And then as concepts and texts become more complex in the upper grades, the progress can become a little bit slower. But it is steady. So to keep moving forward in your reading requires that more and more sophisticated level of language and text comprehension. So we do see all of our grades going in the right direction, but that explains for a little bit the difference you see in the gains across those different grades.
Is the fall norm and the winter norm, are they different norms? So that if you see 79 and 79, it's not that they're making any progress. They're just still making, they're like the same level compared to the norm?
Right.
Correct? So that's good. It's good to see.
Yes, it's still steady. It's just, it's always shocking to see the little ones' score go up so fast, but they develop so fast in those skills that it also explains for it.
But that norm for the winter, even for the little ones, is a different norm than they'd be compared against for the fall, correct? Or no? Or is it one norm for that grade? And this is how they've, am I asking this clearly enough or no?
I think you are. They are normed at the beginning of the year and they do keep comparing to that same group going through. So that will adjust as the year goes on.
What they're comparing against is where they would be expected to be at that point of the year?
Yes, yes.
So to have a big jump means they're progressing faster than what was even expected?
Yes.
And the benchmarks and the expectations, who sets those? Where, how are those set?
Those are set by the STAR assessment, just based on where the results come in across the nation.
So when we say we're at 86% of that benchmark, that's compared to those standards that are set by the STARS?
Yeah, that is.
It's not set, it's what they've observed. Whatever period they're looking at, it's the observed.
So that, like I mentioned earlier, this is the national reference. What we want to work with with STAR going forward is how can we get some more closer-to-home information as well? I think that would be helpful to us. Because we know when we saw the fluctuation in the results when they renormed, we had questions. So how can we look even closer to home and how we're doing across the state? And that comparison, I think, would be even more helpful to us, too.
How many months in between is this?
The first one is given in September. The second one is given in January.
And why just second, fifth, and eighth grade?
We chose those grades because it's the culmination of that school moving forward. Two years ago, we shifted to that with our SMART goals so that we can see how the work culminates and where we want kids to be before they move on to the next school. We have this information for all the grades.
How are the other grades looking?
But those are what we highlight. They're all progressing as well.
They're progressing as steadily as?
Pretty similar. Our math performance here, also moving in a good direction. Once again, gain in Primrose with 82% of the second graders meeting or exceeding that grade level expectation, with 85% in fifth grade, 84% in eighth grade. So progress made in all grades there. And then we just wanted to update the professional learning that has been taking place to support these SMART goals across the year. This spring, we rounded out This spring, we rounded out our Year 2 partnership with PLC Associates and Literacy. This year, their support has helped us to think about connections and alignment between the classroom Tier 1 instruction and the more targeted Tier 2 supports. And we further investigated options for monitoring students' progress in phonics and their decoding skills and made an investment in the Foundation's decodable readers to support students' phonics skills. And at the 3-5 level, our consultants have assisted our teachers in analyzing the knowledge-building wit and wisdom assessments. And this helps with both, they're thinking about how they're administered, the types of questions that they're asking, and then using the student's performance information to further plan instruction. And also to see how students are performing in comparison to those standards covered within that module of study. And then in grades 6 through 8, our consultants continue to provide the support for aligning curriculum to the Science of Reading under also the NYPD framework, as well as assigning some reading approaches for the content area teachers, too, and how they can further infuse those practices to support the understanding of those content areas. Because we know a lot of it has become very reading-heavy across any of the subject areas. And finally, we know that the implementation of wit and wisdom has been a tremendous lift and shift for our teachers this year. And they've done such an excellent job. So we've provided onsite support, direct from the company, to assist them with that as well in understanding the module structure, the lesson delivery, and how to most effectively plan for instruction for their students within that model.
I have a question. How about for the parents? Is there a link for them as well?
So, interesting that you mention that. We had a visit over to Primrose not too long ago and we were able to see some of this in action. An up-and-coming board workshop, we're going to bring some of those materials in. Take a peek at those and people are welcome to, welcome to take a peek at what that looks like and we'll describe what that's like in action.
Will we be able to get any kind of quantitative information or qualitative information about how wit and wisdom is affecting these ELA scores? Is it possible to isolate that anywhere?
I don't know if you would be able to yet for these results, you mean, or the state?
I'm saying, will we be able to in the future?
Moving forward, you'll be able to see some of the impact. The tricky part is, is that we don't get a lot of the detailed information from the state on the student's performance. You basically get levels of performance. So that makes it a little bit tricky. But I will say anecdotally, so far even from the teachers that are in those testing grades, they're very impressed with the amount and style of writing in which students are interacting with, responding to text, which is different in quantity and in, I'll say, the effectiveness of it than they have seen in years past.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was really helpful to see it in action and I know we're going to bring that forward at a later meeting, so I'm not going to, you know, belabor it, but, because I think it's more useful to see it in person. But I think, you know, as this is rolling out, too, it's always important to communicate that out to the parents of what it is. Because I definitely will get questions of like, "What is this wit and wisdom and what's going on here?" And things like that, so, yeah.
Transition to math. So for professional learning in math, we've partnered with PNW Bosse's and Dr. Anjala Sobrin to take a data-driven approach to enhancing math instruction across the grade levels as well. This work began with an analysis of student performance data to identify some strengths and areas for growth, and that's an ongoing piece for us as well. We've also conducted a needs assessment and some feedback meetings with math teachers at all different grade levels to ensure that the professional development and instructional strategies are in alignment with the needs of their classrooms. Looking ahead, we're going to convene a K-12 Math Visioning Committee this spring. This will consist of teachers from representing various grade levels and the goal will be to build a unified approach to what the future of math learning might look like here in summer.
So you're kind of at the part where you were like two years ago with the Science of Reading stuff is really?
And we're anticipating, New York State as well, is, went through the P3 literacy briefs that they've released and now are working on numeracy briefs that we can expect to drop sometime soon. So that'll, of course, guide some of our work moving forward as well and continuing to base our work here in alignment with the standards.
So you're not just looking at, let's say, you know, I know everyone has feelings on everyday math, right? You know, one way or the other, everyone has a feeling on it, I think. And so you're not just looking at that particular program, you're looking at K-12 everything, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's more looking at the student data, looking at the needs of the teachers and the needs of the students that they have identified in their classrooms, looking at those through lines, K-12, and what we're seeing in terms of the student's growth, development. And then looking at all of our programs and all of the strategies that we use to reach kids, looking at that alignment with the standards and not taking a deep-dive approach into one versus another.
Right, because I know it always, and I know I've brought this up to you guys before, but like, you know, in general, like, you know, you have that everyday math piece, but then there's kids who wouldn't be able to access, like, a co-teach environment until they can, you know, because there's a different curriculum in the special education math program, for instance. And so, you know, there's always thoughts, I'm sure, into that as well as to aligning the special education curriculum with everyone else's curriculum. Because I know 6 through 8, it works differently than K through 5.
Sure, absolutely. I think even with that mindset, we've changed and shifted over the past year that getting away from locking into one curriculum is not what it's about. We've learned that with any of the subject areas, which is why Anjala has been very helpful in getting us out of just that curriculum-program thinking, but it doesn't matter. You need the foundation and knowing the best instructional practices, no matter what program was handed to you to deliver, and knowing the students that are in front of you, as Tara was saying. So that groundwork needs to be really solid. Of course, then auditing to say, "Here's what you have in place. Here's how it shows against the standards. Here's what you need to think about." And those are important conversations to have. But until that foundation's done, any program that you bring on is going to have benefits or drawbacks to it. So we do that groundwork first and you're set up in a much better place to audit what you currently have and make really informed decisions on how to best move forward.
I had a question, and I'm sorry if you explained this already.
Okay.
But, so just take the fifth grade real quick. 85% are at or above the level, the math grade level benchmark. 85% are at what number? Is that like a 65, 70? Like, how does that? What is the level? What is the at or above?
It's the percent of kids that meet what they deem as the grade-level national benchmark. So it's not like a score of getting a 50 on something.
Like, how high is that? Like, how high is that benchmark? Is it just being able to read a sentence? Is it, like, how?
It's, they are based on...
How do they deem what that level is?
They are based on the standards of what is expected for that grade level is written out in the standards.
It's levels of proficiency within the standards. So they'll break it into Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4, where 3 and 4 are considered at benchmark or above. So it's not a percentage base, like you were saying, like a 65% or 70%. It's those four levels.
So 1 through 4?
Right.
3 and 4 being that proficient?
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
And again, we use STAR because everyone takes it versus, you know, looking at the state tests. And I mean, I know, like, this is one piece of data, I guess, is what I want to make sure.
Right, we try to always make sure that our data sets are multifaceted, right? Because there's drawbacks to any data set. The state tests, we know not every child takes it. We still have opt-out rates. So this is at least an internal measure, which is nationally normed, but gives us that benchmark chance to see how our kids are doing across the course of the year.
But at the same time, this is the only thing you use to make sure, "Okay, we're okay with, you know, second grade math."
Not the only thing. So there are other, there are other various measures. For instance, we also include the supplemental program IXL. And within that, there's a diagnostic feature that students have engaged with this year. And it's able to tell us even more detailed information on how students, the areas where they show strengths and areas where to zoom in on for further support when it comes to reading and math. There's also our, obviously, our curriculum-based measures that students are engaging with within the curriculum itself. In reading, we also have the DIBELS assessment, which is an assessment of their foundational skills and is another very wonderful screener in being able to identify students that may need some extra support or who are really solid in those foundational skills. So we always keep a multifaceted set of information when taking a look at a kid's profile.
Good. I just want to make clear that this isn't the only thing that you guys are looking at. And I know that you've done a lot of professional training, if I'm not mistaken, on how to most effectively use the IXL?
Yes.
Piece now, because that's been used for both English and math now at this point, right?
It is, it is. And it's about how, using it most effectively so that the time that students are on it, it's zeroing in on those points where they could really use supplemental practice, support, and engage with those standards again.
Great.
You said there were some kids who were not taking these. So what percentage is this number based off of? Like, what percentage of the students that are taking these tests?
So the STAR assessment is of all students in the school. It's the state assessment where we run into the percentage of kids that we call test refusal or opt-out. And we still have a percent of that each year. So unfortunately, you can't get a full picture on the state assessment of how all your students are doing. It's tricky.
Is that a big percentage that are not? Is it 50/50?
No, the percentage is actually going down. It was heightened for quite a while. But it's actually, I would say, yeah, about 25% of students opting out at the middle school level, a little lower at the elementary level. So it's really important, therefore, you see why to have the internal measures, too, to monitor student progress.
But there's no opt-out on the STARS tests?
There is not. If we have students who are alternatively assessed, we may give them different assessments because that is what their need is, but those are very specific cases and we follow that accordingly.
And these, and these, this data that you're showing us today is based on the STARS, not on the state assessment?
Correct, yes, this is the...
Opt-out's not really affecting these numbers?
No, yeah. So at least this, we base SMART goals off of this because it gives you a fuller picture of all the students' performance.
And as far as, so for 8th grade, you offer algebra. So how does that tie into, they still take a STAR test, but it's not going to be based on 8th grade math? It's going to be normed for algebra, correct, or no?
They're taking the same STAR assessment.
They are?
They are taking the same STAR assessment. They're not taking the 8th grade state test. So that is another factor as to why we wouldn't look at 8th grade math state test assessment data to really get a full picture of 8th grade, in addition to the opt-outs.
Okay, right, because the, how the STAR works is basically, the more questions you get right, the harder they're going to make it, right?
Correct, yep.
It is adaptive, yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Thank you, Liz and Tara.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the global citizenship update in our Forward in Excellence Report. We have two more components. The Fiscal Stewardship is coming up at the April board meeting and in May, we have the Family and Community Engagement. And that would conclude our Forward in Excellence Report at that time.
Okay, thank you, Harry. This is going to bring us to a board discussion on, I just wanted to have a preliminary discussion on our ex officio student member of the board. We have to have a policy and procedure, I guess, in place by July 1, by like state law. So it's just something that I wanted to kind of put on everyone's radar. I know West Putt sent us some resources to look at about adding a student member to your BOE. Hopefully, everyone can, if you need me to point you into where that fell into our email, because sometimes it falls into different folders, let me know. But it's just some stuff to think about because they looked at some school districts that have already begun using student board members. It's, a lot of it is up to our discretion as a board. So there's Crotton-Harman, Hastings-on-Hudson, Condon-Louisborough, Putnam Valley, White Plains are the ones that West Putt looked at. So they can kind of give us a sense of how they do it. It doesn't mean that that's how we have to do it. Again, it's very much up to our discretion. I also reached out to Brenda O'Shea, who's in charge of our student government at the high school. And we're going to arrange a meeting for the board officers of the student government, as well as some board members to kind of get together and start talking about this. And she's also going to reach out to some of her New York State colleagues to see how they've chosen. So there's a lot of different options and we have a lot of, and we have the resources from West Putt. So I kind of just wanted to get a sense of where the board's thinking on this and then before it goes to the Policy Committee to think. Because there's, we can have it where it's like an all-high-school vote. They have it where student government selects. They have it where, like, we've seen it where high school students and counselors select through an application and interview process. And then, obviously, we couldn't do this, but it would be current student board members would interview and recommend candidates, which we don't have a current one, so that would be tricky. At the West Putt Dinner last year, they had student board members who were currently sitting and present, and they did it differently. Some of them did it for two-year terms. Some of them had two people do it for two-year terms, so you had a junior and a senior, so it would rise up. And that way, it wouldn't be all of the load on one person to attend all of these meetings, because, you know, it can be taxing on a high school senior's schedule. So I just kind of wanted to get a sense of, with everyone, of what they might be thinking. I know I was kind of leaning towards potentially like the application and interview process. Like, we wouldn't, as a board, have a role in it, but it would be done through the high school and we would just have to think of how that would go. But I don't know if anyone has a thought?
What would actually be like their involvement?
So that would be something that we would have to craft, but basically, as an ex officio members, they would come and sit at the board table and give their opinions on things that are going on, that we're working on as board action. They're not a voting member. So that's important to understand. But they would have a, they would just lend a voice to the students. So whether it be that they go out and like talk to the kids, give their perspective. It's just a matter of giving them a seat at the table, I guess, to really lend the student voice.
Then they would just be in general, the general meeting?
Yeah, they wouldn't be in exact session with us.
No, no, they wouldn't recommend that because that opens up a different can of worms. Exactly.
So it's kind of like having the...
It's kind of like having Jimmy here for like the whole meeting and he would sit like...
So you got to put them through that?
Well, if they apply and want to do it, it's not...
But it could also be a portion of the meeting. I mean, if there's a limit that maybe seems appropriate because they're students. I don't know. But that's something I guess...
Could be. I mean, I think that's another reason to maybe have two instead of just one, because that way you're dividing the duties, because that is a lot.
Yeah, I think having two at least where they can...
Not even do us all make it to every meeting, so...
And they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't be expected to make like all of like the other meetings that we have, like, you know, during the year and...
I think it's really just a more matter of having a voice in board actions, so... And they could give us a little updates on different things around the community. But again, West Putt really did a nice little insert on this, so you can kind of see what they're talking about. And they were just trying to have, like, to see where, like, what they were talking about, like, meeting attendance, liaison role. So like, it would give us an opportunity to maybe hear from more students so that as a student, kind of talking to other students to hear what's going on.
And this is something required now by the state?
So they'll be on for, as of July or next?
July 1, we have to have a policy by, so...
I don't wonder, we have to have a board member on?
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's July 26? I thought it was this year. We have to have a policy by July 1 of this year, but then the board, the student has to be then sitting on the board, right? And I thought you said it was for this year, Nancy. Okay.
Oh, so we won't have somebody till 2026? That would sit here?
No, I think it's for the next school year.
Okay.
Like, I wouldn't expect them to come to our retreats or anything like that.
So they'd probably have to interview for it by the end of the school year to get on for next?
Potentially. I would say we probably, if we get the policy in place, I would say that the application process would probably be in like September, October.
Right, because it would have to be an incoming senior for next year.
Yes.
Or...
It doesn't have to be a senior. The only requirement is it can't be a freshman. That's the only requirement that we're bound by. It doesn't have to be a senior. The only requirement is it can't be a freshman. That's the only requirement that we're bound by.
Yeah, because you're not going to vote somebody and obviously now that would be leaving.
Right. So, so yeah, so I mean, I guess this is just put on your thinking caps. And I just wanted to get a sense of what everyone's, you know, thinking on.
The application process or even a student vote? Probably either or. I don't know. I think probably lean towards a student vote, so they have their official that they wanted as opposed to somebody who just-
I think they should also maybe-
I like giving them some, some of that ability. I mean, we've, we've seen our students that fantastically be able to come in and, and give their views. I think they could probably figure out amongst themselves how they want to elect someone for their board rep.
Maybe write something as to why they would want to make the position, give us a paragraph or something like, of why, what their interests are.
Well, I, I suggest that we still have some time. We should ask the policy committee to do a little study. What is the purpose of this student's role, okay? Learning part, responsibility part. So we have that clearly defined, so that policy is put in place.
Yeah, agreed.
And then we will decide whether we recruit two or one or however we proceed, I think.
I think two's probably good to have, just to have, yeah. Well, just to have at least-
How much they're expected to do.
So they're not sitting on an island by themselves with, you know, have somebody to bounce ideas off of and be able to-
And plus, this could be a, a big time commitment, two meetings in a month when there's sports or college applications or-
That's why we need to really define the purpose.
Right. So I think that if we look at these other, how the other, these other schools did it, I'm sure there's a sample policy from NISBA. And like I said, Brenda O'Shea is going to reach out as well, so we can collaborate with, with them. And I think that'll be a good partnership to get all the kids involved.
And it does start July one, twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
But we can excuse them for the summer if we want.
Our exciting summer meetings? I'm assuming they wouldn't be for board retreat and that kind of stuff. It would just be for general meetings, right? All right. Well, thank you, guys. I just kind of wanted to-
It's exciting, no, it's exciting.
I wanted to put that on the radar because it's coming up and we have to, you know, make big decisions. So I know Nancy's going to put that for the policy committee to start to review. But I think we should also talk to Brenda O'Shea in a, a smaller meeting and report back and, and we can get going on that. Okay, let's see. Now we have our board action for the Somers Voting Machine Agreement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District approves the agreement with the County of Westchester for the use of certain voting machines. And equipment for the May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five annual budget vote and trustee election is presented and authorizes the, and empowers the district clerk to execute the agreement. And be further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs its officers and employees to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of and to cause compliance with the agreement.
Somers, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Personnel consent agenda. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
Somers, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to the athletic team merger for the North Salem baseball. It's looking to merge with our Somers varsity JV and freshman boys' baseball teams. I'd like to invite Mark Haddam up and we can have a bit of a discussion first.
Good evening.
Hello, thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. We had a lot of questions come up about this. So we kind of just wanted to get a sense of clarity before moving forward. Let's see. Okay, okay, this is furthermore, this is the letter of intent from us. So could you tell us how many prospective players are coming from North Salem potentially?
Yeah, so before I get started, I'd like to introduce our varsity baseball coach, Coach JT Genovese. He's here to assist with some of this information. Coach Genovese is in his third year leading our program and we are super, super fortunate to have him. So thank you for being here tonight, Coach. As per the merger paperwork that we received from North Salem, there are eight players that they are anticipating coming over. Now, what that number looks like next week, we shall see. But they, section one, our governing body has paperwork they have to fill out when mergers come about. You have to list the students in ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade that you would be sending over in case of a merge. And twelfth grade, excuse me, they filled out three for ninth grade, three for tenth grade, and two for eleventh grade.
Okay.
And that's the maximum that would be permitted according to what they filed?
Yeah, you know, this, Harry, this has been going on for a while as well. And they've been hosting open gyms and through their preseason registration, et cetera. Eight, they feel like is the comfortable number. We will see when they get here. Eight would be the maximum, but those numbers can change also depending on a million factors. You know, when we have registration on our teams, you have twenty and then that, that number comes off. But to answer your question, eight is the number that they sent us and eight would be the max that we would accept.
We could have less, but not more than eight.
Correct, correct. And for clarity, we have three programs here in Somers. We have a varsity team, a junior varsity team, and a freshman team. We could talk about numbers, et cetera, if you guys want to know. But those students would make one of those teams. We do not, we will, we will not be cutting any players on this year's, from this year's baseball program from grades nine through twelve. There's a little different story with eighth graders that we're going to have some eighth graders try out based on numbers for our freshman team. This is the third year we've done this. But from grades nine through twelve, no Somers players will be cut. It's never the athletic department's policy, never the athletic, excuse me, never the athletic department's practice to want to cut players. So everybody that comes out from Somers that wants to try out between grades and nine through twelve will have a, have a team to plan, whether it's freshman JV or varsity.
So what's been the biggest concern? We got flooded with a bunch of emails. I know it's just more uncertainty. It did for the coach especially, like, have players or parents come up to you directly? Is, is there a concern that their kid's going to lose playing time or what's been the main concern about that idea? Now, we just heard outside, it's eight kids spread out through three teams. I think it sort of lessens the impact as what everybody thought it was going to be?
It's a, it's a great question, Dom, and thank you. So just to give you guys a little history and a backstory here, this has been something that has been discussed since this summer with North Salem. Coach and I have spoke a lot, especially recently, but since the summer, North Salem has been trying to figure out that situation, right? And mergers, the merger application, you need to check a box as to why you would merge with another school. And North Salem is merging with us because they have an insufficient number of players. So I just, and, and they saw this problem coming in the summer. They went back. We, both sides decided, all good. They thought about it again, went back, and then came again, finally, and here we are with the merge. So I'm going to answer your question, Dom, as to what the major, main concerns would be. And I want to be clear that those main concerns, even though this popped up recently, we've had these conversations about what concerns would be and can we house North Salem players comfortably? And, and I want to thank JT. He's been great. He's been there every step of the way with me. So, so you understand numbers in our baseball program this year is, and, and Coach, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we've been in the low sixties your first two years here. This year, we have fifty kids with eight to ten eighth graders registered. So we have fifty kids. So our numbers are down, I don't know, thirteen to fifteen percent already. So that is, that, that makes us feel comfortable. High school athletics are funny, folks. You might think you have a lot of kids on a team and you might keep a lot of kids, but by the third week of the season, kids are hurt, right? The sport of baseball is, and, and Coach can speak to it, between pitch limits, kids can only pitch so many innings, between injuries, between kids getting sick, between kids having personal commitments, between schoolwork, a kid gets pulled off a team. Those numbers dwindle, right? And, and we are super confident when, that every student from North Salem will have a place. And every student from Somers will most importantly have a place to compete, to play. So while these are kind of, I, I want to be clear that these are conversations that just didn't pop up, right? We've had this. Coach Genovese has done something remarkable as well to answer your question. I've never seen, I've seen at the varsity level, I've never seen at the JV and freshman level where Coach has introduced volunteer assistants on the JV level. And this year, he's introducing that on the freshman level. You see this on the varsity level a lot, right? We will also have additional coaches there, board-approved volunteer coaches that will be supporting those JV and freshman programs. So playing time, I'm fully, fully confident everybody will play. They'll probably play too much. I am also extending our game season. I'm adding another two to three games to our freshman and JV level. If they get played with weather, that's another thing. But I want to make sure that there is a cushion there for everybody to play a little bit more. But I also feel with the additional coaching that Coach and phenomenal that he's brought in, the reps that our players get will not actually go down, they're going to go up. We will have, you know, two coaches on the field with those levels and that's going to be incredible as well. So I know that was a long answer, Dom. Hopefully, I got to it. I just want to be very clear that this is something for seven months that we have put a lot of time and effort in because we want our kids here to always have the best opportunity to succeed.
I actually like to have a short answer for you. Can you just list what are the advantages to Somers and disadvantage to Somers if the merger is taking place? And vice versa, what's the advantage and disadvantage to North Salem? One, two, three. I mean, that's it.
So you're asking me, Efe, what the advantages is, what the advantage is to the Somers side and the disadvantage? The advantage for the, for North Salem is clear. Those kids would not have a place to play baseball. That's the advantage. There is, there is no disadvantage to those kids. To the Somers side, we have always, Efe, supported North Salem athletics. We have merged with them in the past. We will continue to merge with them. So for us, it's a benefit. And if you want to talk benefit, I think about our merger with North Salem wrestling and, and seeing those kids and the relationships, the, the social impact that it's had on those kids and how wonderful it's been. So I don't see any negative to anything other than kids from a neighboring community having a chance to compete and kids in our program getting a chance to merge with those kids, to have that chance, to make new friends, to build relationships. And for us as a district to support a district that otherwise wouldn't have a place for the kids to play.
So you're saying basically it's a win-win situation?
Correct.
There's no disadvantage for either side?
Correct.
Now, for transportation, sorry.
What's the, what's the anticipated duration of the agreement?
So, thank you, Darryl. Great question. So, so mergers in section one are only for one year. That's it. Every year, we have to refill our paperwork. We have to send them in. So this, this merger will be done, this merger will be for this school year.
For this season that starts next week.
For this season that starts next week. And then if, I'm going to use another program just so I won't use this. Every year when we merge with other programs, we have to refill out that application during that season for that season that's board-approved. So this will only be for this year. And then if we decide to do it, if North Salem decides that they need to do it, right, if their numbers still aren't good and they have a modified program there that seems to have some good numbers, if North Salem decides to, they'll ask us and then we'll discuss it. So it's only for this year now.
What would North Salem be contributing?
I was just going to ask that. What, what resources are they going to provide or can they offer any?
Yeah, so typical, typical merger resources are seen financially, right?
Or coaches, like assistant coaches, any kind of resource to help the team?
We will not have any, we will not have any coaches come that way. That was part of our summer conversation. But we feel good in-house that we can support all those, all of our athletes, our baseball players. The resources would be in financial and as a, Miss Palatania can attest, is a complicated but simple billing system and how we are reimbursed from a merge, merge team, and that's buses, referees, officials, et cetera.
Now, like practice transportation, North Salem, I guess, will bring their students over for practice?
Yeah, so Dom, what I'm assuming it will look like is they will bus their kid, their, their students here and their parents will probably have to pick them up after practice unless they've set up busing round trip. That, I'm not sure.
Now, I guess the parent meeting's Thursday?
So yeah, so as part of this, because this came quick and fast, we, they officially sent it over on Friday. We discussed a few options, discussed with our community. Saturday seemed quick to us and it would have been via Zoom. I wanted to meet with the parents. So Coach Genovese, I, Harry, we spoke and we decided at our meet the coaches night, which is all programs, all parents are invited to come. I'm going to be there with Coach Genovese and offer any answers from grades eight through twelve. Any, any student athletes that are trying out for the baseball team to go ahead and bring it on. And let's see if, if there's any discussion, hoping that it's seen as a positive. And again, I, I know that, that this will be a great thing. And this, our district is doing, is doing a good thing here.
Yeah, please keep us updated on how that goes and I think that, that meeting will sort of answer a lot of questions that we got, we received this week.
Absolutely will do.
I think if the parents can get on, like, if the parents can be, feel comfortable with all this after, like, I know that you've been sitting with it for a while. I think it, that the parents haven't been sitting with it for a while. And I think that's part of the issue for them. So if, once you meet with the parents, I think that'll be really helpful and go in a long way because it's clear that it's only one year, right? And so like, you know, because some of the emails we received, for instance, were talking about kids who are going to be coming to high school in five years, you know, from now or whatever. And, and that's fine, but I, then I asked the question of Harry, actually, and he told me, and, and now we just said it publicly as well, is how long is this merger? Well, it's only for the year. So, okay, that's not going to affect the kid who's coming potentially in five years. I mean, it could look like a different, you know, team altogether. So I think that's important and like all of that information, if it can just be conveyed clearly. Because even looking at these numbers, I know you said you had, you don't have it on our letter of intent for Somers High School. You don't have grade eight on there because I guess they don't have to be put on there because they're just registered in family ID?
On the Somers side, Amanda?
Yeah, on the Somers side.
On the Somers side, yep.
Because then there's thirty-seven people that you have listed for grades nine through twelve that are registered, I'm assuming, in family ID that are looking to try out for the baseball team, nine through twelve, for all three teams. So adding five to eight kids wouldn't be the end of the world, it sounds like.
Certainly not. And just for clarity, so for numbers, because those are ever-changing, we have four twelve, we have four seniors, eleven juniors, ten sophomores, fourteen ninth graders, and eleven eighth graders are trying out. That number, the, the eighth graders this year, we, there's a, I got to talk to Coach again, not, not for here, but we might not be keeping all the eighth graders, but that eleven is the maximum amount of eighth graders we would be keeping.
Is there, is there an upper limit on the number of kids that can play baseball?
So, no. Every coach has their own kind of threshold to keep. There are a lot of things to consider. Resources are certainly one of them, uniforms, et cetera. It's not. But I, I think Coach has a, has a sweet spot. Usually in the athletic world, you start with the varsity coach, see what that sweet spot is and then go from there. I think in this case, from talking to Coach, we, we feel really good about the numbers of where we are. Even though we're down a little bit, we feel really good. Again, if you're thinking, Darryl, the nine kids play, but it's a lot of the stuff I spoke about before, injuries, pitch limits. So I think sixteen, eighteen varsity usually carries a little bit more and, yeah.
And with these numbers from North Salem, we're not getting out of that sweet spot?
No, no, absolutely not. Absolutely not. The, the roster sizes, and Coach, please correct me if I'm wrong here. The roster sizes, we anticipate for our freshman baseball team would be around, if the merger is approved, would be around sixteen-ish kids? Sixteen, seventeen, and your JV, if the merger is approved, would be seventeen, eighteen. Yeah, okay.
The varsity number, still, if we're on the eighteen side, be the lowest number we've had since I've been here. Twenty's still probably about that last year. JV is about seventeen last year as well. And freshman, we, we usually, it depends on just kind of how the program is that works. That feels like, that's always that like gray area because of how we're kind of trying to balance everything out. That's usually around that sixteen, seventeen.
We might ask Pat to dust off his right arm and come out and pitch if we need incident.
Now that you extended the season.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly. We might need more, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate you guys coming and clarifying that. And I hope that everyone can, either watching at home or is here tonight to watch it or watches it when it becomes available tomorrow on our, on our website with the YouTube link so that they can have the accurate information. And then Thursday night is your parent meeting and I-
Just information tonight helped a lot. Clarify, I was, there's a lot that I was unaware of.
And I'm sure based on what we've already heard from the public, if that meeting, however that meeting goes, I'm sure we'll hear from some of those parents on Friday or Saturday.
So, I propose to maybe table this resolution and then we can always have a special meeting if we have to work against some deadlines for next week.
If necessary, yeah.
If necessary, correct. Can I have a motion to table this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just make sure that the camera picks it up, otherwise it, they're not going to hear you at home, Mark.
Just for clarity, the vote is approved by the Athletic Council on March 18th. That would be the deadline to approve a merger for this season.
Okay.
So, it's, it would need to be approved by March 18th, March 17th in the morning, so I could forward appropriate paperwork, so they're ready for that.
Okay.
I can get in Friday or Monday if we need to.
We're, we're willing to bring four of us in if we have to in order to, once everything settles.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for coming and clarifying all of this information tonight. I appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to our second public comment section of the night. Does anyone have any general comments? It could be about agenda items or non-agenda items at this point? Anyone? Okay. Then that brings us to board comments.
Hi. Let's see. I just wanted to thank the Drama Club. Oh, my gosh, that was such a great performance and it showed off your talent, your confidence and passion. I also wanted to thank Tara and Liz for your presentation on global citizenship and talking about how it's our kids' responsibility and it promotes a sense of belonging and acceptance of others. And then like I, I guess I'm starting to do this now, this is like a tradition here to, this month is Women's History Month, and that originated as a congressional resolution in 1987. And just a couple days ago, it was International Woman's Day, and that was founded in the 1900s from the woman. March 8th? Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Ife. And that originated from the women's labor movement in the 1900s. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the Drama Club coming out. That was a great performance today. You know, and I appreciate the parents emailing us regarding their, their questions with the baseball and, you know, we acted pretty quickly to get the right information out and, you know, hopefully Thursday, when you have your meeting, please reach out to us again if you still have further concerns and we'll make sure we get the vote in in time.
Okay. I have two things to say. One is on, on the Global Citizens Report. I always felt that the global citizenship is difficult to get a clear definition or learn about it in classroom. So, it has to be done through action, community activities and so on. And yet, that type of activities process is difficult to wrap around, like, you know, giving people a grade and say, you know, take a test or like your mass test, you get a number. So, I've been actually talking to the school administration and thinking that we should try to promote as much as possible in this global citizenship. I personally, you know, suggest I'm willing to donate a scholarship for the senior student to write essay about it and so we can build a so-called case database. What is global citizenship? What did you do and what do you think you've done? You know, it's deserving to be a global citizen and so on. So, I think I would like to see that happen, hopefully this year, starting to have this, to get a better handle on the definition and feeling about what is so-called global citizenship. So, that's my first point. Second point is anticipating next month. I assume, Chris, we're going to have another budget presentation?
Yep, two weeks.
Yeah, and I saw these reports and you've got a lot of numbers already onto, I have two suggestions. One is that you have budget data per school, which is very good, Primrose, you know, SIS. Can you add one more sort of section on the administration?
Sure.
So that we could have entire sort of comparison from for school and administration? Because, you know, the whole budget problem in, in school is we always, budget goes up because you never can control it. This is, and, and personnel and the salary benefits is the bulk of it, which is also, we don't have much, you know, real easy way to control it. But I think we need to understand that better, okay? Because if we don't, that's even worse. We can't, you know, just never, for example, you, you have two numbers on that, it's good to compare cost per student for Somer and versus Bosse's. Remember, you have $37,000 for the average, you know, Bosse's, sort of their school districts, and for us, we're $38,000. But actually, that's your 2022 to 23 data. But if you look at, you know, last year or 24, 25, or this year, just take our own number, $110 million divided by 24, 88 students is $44.5 thousand.
Ife, are you talking more about the Forward and Excellent Fiscal Stewardship piece you're asking for some of this information? Some of those numbers you're giving are from the Forward and Excellence report.
So, this, this number is, is important because, you know, if we want to reduce 44 to 40, let's say, take 10%, you know, how do we do that? It's tough. I mean, it's not easy. So, I, I think get the for-school and administration, all this in, in comparison, also with all the personnel, salary, benefits in there, I think we will understand the title, the entire picture much better. Yeah, I'm not saying that we, we definitely can, you know, cut 10% or not or, or towards a goal. I mean, at least we should understand our, you know, situation and then compare to the peer schools and others and so on, see whether there's any way we could manage the school, you know, as the physical sort of responsibility, you know, to control it. Okay? Thank you.
All right. I'll go next. I want to thank Liz and Tara for coming and giving us the information. It's always very helpful to get. Thanks again to the SMS Drama Club for their, for their little teaser of the Madeline Matilda Jr. Show coming up. Thanks to A.D., Haddam and Coach Genovese for coming and giving us a little bit of information on the baseball program. And most importantly, as Dom said, I want to thank all the parents who wrote to us on this issue. I've harped on this before and my fellow trustees are probably tired of hearing me say it, but we need information, right? We base our decisions on facts and on information. And when we get that input from the community, that's a really, really important indicator to us, helps us gauge where we should be going. And I, and I want to also thank in particular Max Grotio for coming out this evening. This is, I hope you're, you're, you're learning an important civics lesson from this. We will always listen, we might not always agree, but we'll always listen to what people have to say. And so, thank you for coming out on a school night and making your voice heard. That's really, really important. And that's a, that's a life lesson as, as you, you know, grow up and, and become active in your community. Make your voice heard. So, that's it for me for tonight. Thank you.
All right, I guess I'm going to echo pretty much what everybody else says. Thank you for the Drama Club for coming out. That was great. I'm sure you guys are going to do an excellent job just by your senior performance here tonight. You guys are going to do great. It's awesome. Thank you, Liz and Tara. Good job, as always. And thanks for Mark and Coach for coming out, trying to help us learn a little bit more about what's going on here. I know it's short notice. You know, I didn't know much about it until yesterday. So, thanks for coming out and hopefully everything works out on Thursday and listen, we'll get back to you on it. Thank you.
Yep. Proud of everyone raising vaulting children. That was terrific tonight, though. Absolutely terrific. Event coming up this weekend. You might see a few cars, maybe some buses around the schools. I don't know if you're going to say something about it, Harry. You do? Okay, I won't, I won't steal your thunder, but we do have a bit of an event going on here at our schools. It's a pretty big deal and pretty awesome. Good luck to all the participants and I'll let, I won't steal your thunder if you've got some statements made.
You can steal it. Is that it? Very good?
That's it. I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up, but I assumed.
Oh, I have it on my list, too. Okay. Well, thank you to Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Malara for bringing out and organizing. I was so happy they accepted our invitation to come and, and bring the kids in because I think it's so great to spotlight all different sorts of activities that the kids are doing and it was wonderful and I look forward, I'm hoping to make it to the performance that weekend. Thank you, Liz and Tara for the presentation. It was great, as always. I, it's always great to hear how, you know, to highlight the professional development and things you're working on in the classroom and to see how that goes up. And I'm really looking forward to, to kind of doing a debrief on our, on our visit to Primrose and for the rest of the board to see a lot of the wit and wisdom in action and things, so. Thank you, Mr. Haddam and Coach for coming in and getting out those, those facts tonight. I think it was really important because I think the problem is when there's no facts or, or there's no information out there sometimes, you know, people are, are worried about what's going on and they, and they don't understand it. And so, it's always good to, to bring some clarity to the situation and I think that's what we'll do and, and we can move accordingly. Congratulations to the artists that were able to show their work at the Catona Art Museum Young Artists 2025 Show recently, art show recently. I know we had some high school students featured in that. I know we'll be recognizing the winter athletes at the next board meeting, so I'll save my congratulations on, on a lot of finalists and things that we've had in the recent, in the recent weeks. And let's see, congratulations to all the teams who participated in the Destination Imagination competition this past weekend. I know Somers was happy to host it. This weekend is the 2025 Regeneron Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and I'm hoping to stop by and check out some of the amazing projects. On the 27th, I attended the Student Council Discussion with Assemblyman Matt Slater where he was invited to discuss the proposed cell phone ban in this year's state budget. It was a really interesting discussion and I, and I, I'm going to set up a meeting with Jimmy so we can continue to talk about it because the, we're trying to advocate, I know Harry and I also had a call with Assemblyman Slater. I know you were on the call with Pete, with Senator Pete Harkum. And just in case anyone doesn't know, there's a cell phone ban proposal in this, this year's state budget from the governor where it would be like a bell-to-bell ban. And we're really trying to advocate for if we already have existing policies in place that are working, why go to that extreme? Or I know Jimmy brought up an excellent point of how, Jimmy brought up a really excellent point of how if it's really social media and things that you're trying to make kids responsible for or screen dreaming, why don't we put resources into that versus just banning cell phones and making it a prohibited thing for kids to do during the school day? And, you know, the kids really expressed their voices on what they see that works for them in the schools and, and some of it has to be personal responsibility and also that kids really actually need them in school, especially at the high school level, to participate in different things like student clubs and things like that. So, a bell-to-bell ban seems a little extreme. Today, I had the privilege of attending a talk with documentarian and film producer Joe Berlinger hosted by the SHS Criminology Club. Also invited were the forensic classes, the IB Film Students and Theory of Knowledge Students, and the students got to ask questions on his work as a documentarian on the criminal cases he has covered. I don't know if anyone's watched the JonBenet recent documentary on Netflix, but he produced that. He, he did, he did that one. He's also really well-known for something called Paradise Lost about the West Memphis Three down in Arkansas years ago in the 90s. It was really interesting. I mean, he was basically responsible for saving somebody off of death row, to be honest, because they were filming down there. But it was great to see the students engaged and interested in all the aspects of the films, from the research to the forensics, to the film production itself. So, it was, it was wonderful. They asked questions on all aspects of it. He offered some career advice for them as he had a, a twisted road to getting to where he is today in, in film production, so. And I want to thank everyone who was able to attend and welcome Dr. Adam Bronstein two weeks ago as we appointed him as our next superintendent in July. He's making plans and starting to have meetings over the next four months to introduce himself to our community with a start date of July 1. And Adam has expressed to me how welcoming our Somers community has been to him, and I'm not surprised in any way. And we also had a site visit, as we mentioned, to Primrose on the 25th. And as a board, I believe we're going to circle back and discuss that workshop in April, so I look forward to that as well. So, and that's.
Yeah, I got a question for you. In the meeting with the state, did they ever talk about the, you know, instead of banning the cell phone, all you need to do is really banning a, a couple of apps, for example, like messaging or some stuff that you really don't want kids do in school during school hours. Banning a cell phone.
You're going to check their phone? Yeah. The discussion, discussion really was more about, yeah, it was more about local and local policies.
The school in terms of the network, in terms of cell towers and so on, but locally having a Zoom, the messaging is not working. It's just fine.
If you go block that at my house.
Yeah. If you let me do, you know, work on your server.
I, I do want to add one separate thing. The science fair this weekend, WSEF, as it's referred to, is, and it has been, and I believe it probably still is this year, the largest regional science fair in the country. It's huge. And, and they're, they're competing, they, they have experts come in, give feedback, they're judged with their presentations and the research that they've done. And there are select students who then will get invited to the international version, ISF. And there's some fantastic prizes at ISF. So, it's a big deal and everyone involved, I mean, what they learn going through the research, the presentation, all the feedback, there's multi-years in the making for them.
There's actually a documentary on ISF on Disney Plus, if you've ever seen it. There's several episodes and it's, it was great to see how, you know, on the international level.
Yeah. So, busy day.
Busy day on Saturday, yes. And it is the Westchester County, the whole of Westchester County. Hundreds of student works will be available for viewing and discussion in the high school, lower gym, upper gym, commons area, all throughout the, the building. And it is amazing, I was there last year, bringing my grandson this year on Saturday. The award ceremony for those students who are recognized as winners will be on Wednesday evening at the high school at 7 o'clock, I believe it is.
Is it Wednesday or Thursday? Is it Wednesday?
I think it's Thursday.
Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, right? Thursday.
I'm just checking, make sure you guys are paying attention. I also wanted to comment about the, the meeting with Matt Slater. That was totally generated by Student Council. They organized everything. They contacted Matt Slater. They invited board members and faculty members to that. There was very good participation by the student body. It was held during community lunch, so people had the opportunity to participate. I had a conversation with Matt Slater afterwards. He was very, very impressed with the, the students at Somers High School and the preparation they had and told the students he was going to take back some of their suggestions to, to Albany for conversation with his colleagues there. Also wanted to thank Ms. Williams, Ms. Malara and the students from the middle school for their teaser on Matilda Jr. earlier in the program. Liz and Tara, thank you for giving the update on global citizenship tonight and Chris for monitoring the presentation. Like to thank the community members for sharing their concerns and fostering the conversation regarding the merger with North Salem on the baseball, baseball program. And thank the board members for their discussion of that and the discussion on ex officio student member of the board. I have had the opportunity the requirement by the state. It it's really a neat opportunity for the students, but it's also a very good opportunity for the board members to have actual input from students at a meeting. It's a little more than when we have our Student Council president come to the podium and speak about things. That's that's great, but having the opportunity to sit at the table at the dais and interact in the conversations, like the board had tonight about the merger with baseball, about the ex officio student. But those types of discussions are very, very important. And looking at the possibility of having two students so they can interchange backfill for one another is is a good suggestion. Having them on off-years so that there can be some continuity is also very good. And I did want to remind the community about the WSEF on Saturday. It's a wonderful experience, and I hope that people get the opportunity to go out and see it.
Yeah, public viewing's later in the day. I think it's like from 4:30 to 5:30.
It's later in the afternoon, yeah. They start the they start around 8 o'clock, I believe, with everything.
Yeah, last year, I went there early, and I was like.
Judging begins at 9:30, it lasts till 4:30. Public viewing will be for the projects from 3:30 to 4:30.
And our school?
Yeah, by school.
Mr. Malaya sent us an email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should thank Bill Malaya for doing all that organization, too.
Yes.
He keeps busy.
That's his, yeah.
That's his baby.
That's his baby. OK. Be resolved that this special workshop, actually, it's not a special meeting, workshop, Board of Education meeting be adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.